Welcome, everybody, to the January fifteenth meeting, two thousand and nineteen. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Sayak.
Here.
Councilmember Spector.
Here.
Councilmember Rennie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jensen.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Leon Ardis.
Here. I'd like to invite up to the dais Nathan Wu. He will lead us in our pledge this evening. And I would like to say a few words about Nathan. Nathan is a Blossom Hill Elementary second grader. Nathan's favorite subject in school is science. Nathan's favorite sports are soccer, football, and tennis. How long have you been playing tennis, Nathan?
Uh, for two years.
Two years. Can you say? Two years into the microphone?
Two years.
All right. Two years on tennis. So, a round of applause for Nathan, and he will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our three outgoing board and commission members this evening. Shelley Katz on our library board, please come up to the podium here. Reza Tavanna, please. Service to the town, I'd like to present to you these commendations. Thank you very much. Reza will be moving on to our planning commission. Next is our closed session report.
Good evening. Prior to tonight's regular scheduled meeting, the councilman in closed session discussed pending litigation. The matter was Cohen versus the town of Los Gatos. No action was taken that requires reporting under the Brown Act.
Thank you. Next up is our consent calendar. Does any member of council wish to pull a consent item? Seeing none, does any member of the public wish to pull any item from the consent calendar this evening? Seeing none, can I have a motion on consent calendar? Vice Mayor?
Move approval of the consent calendar consisting of items one through four with the correction that we received in the desk item tonight.
Thank you. All second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, none, passes unanimously. Our next item is verbal communications. Are there any members in the public wishing to speak on any item for three minutes that is not on the agenda this evening? Now is your time. Seeing none, we will move forward with our first item of business, item number five, which is a review of a one-way street pilot program on North Santa Cruz Avenue. And council will be providing direction to staff on a possible option implementing the ideas. And delivering our report is our Public Works Director, Mr. Matt Morley.
Thank you very much. I was going to present from the podium, but given the condition of the mics, I think I'll stay here. So, the one-way street pilot was an identified council priority from last year. Over the last several months, staff has been exploring a number of options and iterations associated with the potential for doing a pilot in the downtown as a one-way street. As noted in the report, we considered a number of options, including accessibility to the downtown, so making sure that vehicles and pedestrians and bicyclists were all able to get into the downtown, that we weren't creating some sort of a wall that gave the appearance that it wasn't a welcoming location. We wanted to be sure that the parking wasn't unduly affected, so we paid special attention to making sure that we minimize the impact on parking. Walkability was a big deal, so the more that we could encourage walkability of the downtown, we included those elements or kept those elements at the forefront. We didn't want to impact the residential neighborhoods, so we're cognizant of anything that we did that might shift the traffic into nearby residential areas. Anything that we could do that would positively affect beach traffic during the summer would be a bonus, so we gave some consideration to that. We have $130,000 allocated in the budget for our project, so we were cognizant of the budget that was allocated, although two of the examples would need a budget augmentation. And we were obviously aware of the roadway requirements in terms of engineering standards and what we could build from acceptability from engineering. Couple other recent experiences that educated us, one was a Blossom Hill road closure that gave us a trial of a one-way street that we didn't necessarily want, but we did see that when that occurred, we shifted a lot of traffic away from Blossom Hill, and all of that traffic took different routes, and we saw great impacts on those other routes. So, we're definitely aware of what the shifts in traffic might look like. And we didn't want to create unintended consequences by shifting traffic in a direction where perhaps we're creating a problem somewhere else in trying to solve for the traffic in the downtown. From a timing perspective, we have envisioned a timing that would start in July and end in October, so a four-month pilot program. This gives us the opportunity to take advantage of the beach traffic in the summer, so we would open the summer with a July start that allows us a little bit of experience with beach traffic and then to get a before and after. And it also allows for some time during the school year when we have students in school, and so we can see what the traffic dynamics look like with that. It also allows us opportunities to finish up the observations and the counts from a parking study that we'll be taking on hopefully shortly and have the main part of that work done, yet being able to observe the changes through the parking studies that we can incorporate them into that report as well. So, from a timing perspective, the July to the October timeframe seemed logical, and at the end of the timeframe, we would put the street back to its current condition and be able to have the discussion with the council about what we saw and what we learned from the pilot program. So, in the report, we provided an example of three options that we thought really worked, and so I'd like to review those with you. So, the first is option A. Option A is a one-way pilot, a one-way street headed southbound. It starts at, it would start as you're headed south on North Santa Cruz at Bachman Avenue. Let me catch up to myself here. And it would include a one-way vehicle lane of travel shared with bicyclists headed in that direction, and a contra-flow bike lane that's shown in green on the map that would provide bike access going in the opposite direction. We like this for a number of reasons. It gives the opportunity for bikes to have that alternate direction where they might want to ride that way anyway, so it sort of takes that admission into account and puts it in place right of way, right away, as opposed to other options where you might have bikes riding the wrong way on a roadway, or the temptation at least to do that. You can see in this option that we include some angled parking on the west side, and that results in a net parking loss in the downtown of about eight spaces, so a fairly minimal loss of spaces. Parking on the east side, we would lose because of the bike lane, so the bike lane would preclude us from parking on that side because it's a contra-flow bike lane. So, you wouldn't want a vehicle traveling across that bike lane to get to the parking spaces. So, by definition, that leaves some unprogrammed space, and we would envision that being available for things like parklets or softer programming space like that. This is just another view of the same thing zoomed in a little bit more. It shows you some of the interactions at the side streets. One of the other concerns from a safety perspective that we have is making that left turn from the side streets, vehicles will need to pay attention to the bike lane as well as to the traffic coming from the opposite direction, so it's a little bit to pay attention to. And of course, one of the things we want to avoid is the opportunity of a car pulling out in front of a bike lane. I will mention that the colors on the map are illustrative of what we would be doing. We would actually not do a green paint all the way along. We would do the green as we do typically in the conflict zones, so across the intersections, we would have the typical dash lines that we look for in order to identify the conflict area for the bicyclists and the vehicles. And then, as you get to the end, this one-way pilot would, on this side, would round up just past Roy Street. And let me get back to the big map. And the reason that we end it before Main Street is we're worried that if we were to end the pilot at Main Street, we would encourage a lot of traffic to turn left into the Almond Grove from a vehicle access perspective. Also, having it end at Elm allows us to direct some traffic down Elm Street towards University, and it provides some relief for the intersection of Main and University where we would see a greater impact if we had the one-way go all the way to Main Street on Santa Cruz Avenue. So, it's in, one of the considerations that we had was making sure that we encouraged vehicles to stay in the downtown and not to flow into the residential areas. So, moving off of this, to the next example, example, option B, it's very much similar with the exception being that the bike lane moves to the opposite side on this example, and it becomes the same way flow, and the bike lane would flow the same direction as traffic, so we would not have a northbound contra-flow bike lane in this particular example. So, I talked a little bit about the disadvantage from having bicyclists ride the wrong way. This one would take a little bit more education enforcement to ensure that the road is absolutely treated as a one-way road. And you can see here that we've also flopped the angled parking to the east side of the street. Because the bike lane is continuing in the flow of traffic, we're able to keep the parallel parking on the other side, resulting in a net increase of about a dozen parking spaces in this example. So, that's a little bit of a change in parking because the diagonal parking is more efficient than the angled parking. This one would start at Bachman as well and at Elm Street as well on that other end. Again, another view of what this looks like sort of zoomed in a little bit. And then, for each of them, for each of the examples, we've provided a cross-section that this is as if you're looking, standing in the road, looking at the car that's coming at you. And so, on your left would be a bike lane, parking to the side of that, and then a big wide parking area on the other side. Option three is a little bit different look on this idea. This would include an entire street closure where we close the street in, for a pedestrian-only area, and there'd be no through traffic. The idea with a pedestrian-only area is it allows for that big pedestrian impact that we were considering. It also influences the beach traffic a little bit more in that it makes it a non-through street from both the north and the south directions, so creates a different dynamic in the downtown. This particular closure is, this location was selected because it impacts the private parking lots in the least way possible, so every other block has a private parking lot or driveway entrance that we would be impacting. We thought this would provide a good opportunity to try something like this on a longer-term basis versus the short weekend event-based trials that we've had in the past. You can see that we've changed the direction on the side streets to both filter the flow of traffic into the parking areas and to allow the traffic to flow towards University, so it has the outlet whether the traffic be going north or south. We would program, in that, in this particular option, we would program the open space potentially through some street furniture. We've got enough money in the budget on this item because it is the most affordable to be able to do some proactive programming in there, so we could provide some activity in the area to encourage the use of the space. There's also the potential that businesses would like this as well. I would say that one of the things that will, if we undertake a pilot that we'll have to pay attention to is being a little bit resilient in the decision. We feel that there'll be a time for traffic to sort of shake out after we make a change, so there'll be some traffic patterns that will need to change, some habits that need to change. So, it would likely be bumpy for a little bit, especially as folks are coming in and finding that their typical route is, has changed a little bit, and they'll need to find a different route. Ultimately, we think, and we'd like to see what happens with the traffic flow, some of it will flow to University and take University as a replacement outlet headed north. Obviously, the north, the southbound capacity remains the same, so that should handle the flow. We would see some folks that we expect learn and try to use the Almond Grove area as their method of getting through the town. We want to see what that impact is. We've tried to make accommodation for that, and from a capacity standpoint, we'd be interested to see what the traffic flow looks like. And with that, that concludes the report. We're definitely interested in the discussion with the council on potential feedback for a potential pilot.
Thank you, Mr. Morley. Does council have questions for staff? So, we'll go with the Vice Mayor and then Mr. Rennie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two. Thank you, Mr. Morley. Option B, if you will put, I'll put the picture up. Doesn't really matter for my question, but one of the things you mentioned on that is, well, as option A, you said, we'll be able to eliminate parallel parking on this side, and we'll be able to program it. You didn't do that with option B, you kept the parallel parking. So, my question is kind of twofold. Why keep the parallel parking in option B? Why not program that? And if you do, how much parking do you lose, if any? And if you didn't keep it, could you do parklet pedestrian street furniture-type programming, to use your word, on that side?
Yeah. So, yes, we could program that side or use it for parklet-type applications. It would be a one-for-one trade-off for parking spaces. So, the reason we didn't explore it is because in this particular option, we can have parking there. In the option A, you cannot have parking on the east side. So, it was a sort of maximizing the parking look in this particular side. If we wanted to do a trade-off of parking spaces, and so reduce parking by, pick a number, another 10 spaces to do parklets or five spaces to do parklets, that's certainly a viable option, and we could include it in this program as well. So, that would just mean buffering off those areas and not allowing parking in them, so creating some sort of a protection to allow the use for a pedestrian or other activity.
So, I can't count how many cars are up there on that diagram. I don't know if you counted how many parallel parking spaces there are, but I understand that you're telling me one-for-one. I just don't know what that number is.
Yeah. So, it's in, I'd have to do the math, it's in the range of probably along the entire stretch, 30 parking spaces, so up to that amount that could be a trade-off for parklets. I would say for the sake of the pilot programming a parklet, similar to the discussions we've been having at the policy committee level and that we'll be having with the council at a later point, would be a little less formal, so we wouldn't be able to do, I wouldn't think we'd be able to do a larger installation where we provide an elevated platform, but we could certainly do something like a temporary ramp that allows it to be accessible and then allow the adjacent businesses to program it from a short-term period, maybe with tables or chairs, or maybe we could facilitate that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rennie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that may have answered some of my question. When I looked at option B, what I think about is all the restaurants except Lexington House are on the west side of the street, so that would be the side that people are going to be most interested in programming parklets. When I looked at the diagonal spaces, I said, well, that's a wider space. Is that where you want to program? Is the space wide enough on the parallel parking side to have parklets? And I know we talked about parklets quite a bit at policy, but we didn't really talk about the width and, you know, would it be, you know, so my question really was sort of that, and would it be also possible to switch it, shift everything over so the diagonal spaces are on the west side and the parallels are on the east side, so you could get bigger parklets on the west side? And I realize the bike lane may complicate that a little bit, and why could you maybe put the bike lane to the left of the travel traffic instead of the right?
So, the, from the engineering perspective, we did look at putting the bike lane on the left and creating that kind of example, and we were certainly, and you can see on our diagrams that we've identified where the restaurants are, and that was certainly a consideration. What we found is, you, from an engineering standpoint, you can't put the bike lane on the left of traffic. The traffic just doesn't expect it to be there, and so you create, you create conflict where you don't want it. So, the bike lane needs to be on the right, or the bike lane needs to share the road, so that would be the potential solution, is to not do a dedicated bike lane and to do share roads, much as we have now in the downtown where bikes can, bikes can use the entire lane either direction. So, that would be an option similar to option A where they share the lane southbound. So, it's a trade-off in that particular case, and that would allow you some additional real estate. One of the challenges that we found is the bulbouts that we have along the street really create, they really handicap us in terms of being able to fully try, fully vet, sort of using the full width of the roadway. In the option where we have the parklets, the committed parklets, that gives us the best example of what it would look to have wider sidewalks, because it really pulls that space out and really dedicates it to non-vehicular use, because you can't park in it. And from a pilot perspective, it sort of gives you a little bit closer feel for what wider sidewalks might look like, as opposed to doing, you know, a parklet here and a parklet there, or a row of several parklets, and trying to figure out where those are going to be. So, it's a trade-off. Certainly, we're open to different iterations and different ideas of how this, how this might be delivered.
Thank you. Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. First of all, I saw that the Parking and Transportation Committee gave input. Did they weigh in on which of your options they preferred?
So, they didn't come to a consensus as a group on which one they preferred. We certainly talked through the pluses and the minuses, and I think some of the individuals may have a preference, and they may express that to you later, but we didn't come to consensus as a group. They provided great input and some great insights to us as to some of their concerns, and some of them, especially on the safety and the preference in using the space, were well-heard and included in the comments in the report.
Okay. Thank you. And process-wise, as I understand what your staff report said, the council this evening is being asked to make some kind of decision as to a process, and then is that, whatever we select, if anything, is then going to be publicized to the community? Is that correct?
Yes.
And I'm assuming, I shouldn't assume, you should never assume, you will be notifying the businesses by contacting each business, and that would be a question, and then how about the adjacent community, the residents? How will they be notified?
So, I think the outreach will be important. We've done some outreach already at Transportation and Parking Commission, as you noted, the through the chamber a little bit already, but definitely need to do some additional outreach if there's a preferred, preferred option. We would vet that option a little bit more, design it a little bit more, move ourselves a couple steps closer, and then definitely do a broader outreach so that folks can provide their input across the board and bring it back to the council in fairly short order so that you can, you can give us direction to move forward with the, with the project.
And I can imagine how one might contact the businesses, not just through the chamber, but through individual stores. And I know you said you don't have it defined yet, but how do you think you might be notifying, for example, Almond Grove?
Yeah. So, the Almond Grove becomes the easy one for us because we have, we have a great email list that we've used through the project there, so we've got good contacts from that. Nextdoor also provides a great resource to us to get information out at a very targeted area, so those are the, those are the two big resources we would use to get the communication out.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sayak?
Thank you, Director Morley. So, I do appreciate having the options available. I do have two questions of you. The first, when transportation and parking looked at it, and also within staff, which of the three, actually, which of the two, between A and B, engineering-wise is the safest, given you're combining pedestrians, I'm sorry, bicyclists as well as car drivers?
I think they're both equally safe. We did, we did have some consideration for, for, you know, options D, E, F, G, and H that we didn't bring forward because they weren't, they didn't pass muster in terms of safety and meeting all of our, of our criteria. So, I think that helps to say that there's, there's iterations that we can, that we can make on any of these that make, are fine-tune adjustments, which is why we're here tonight. But from a safety perspective, all of these are safe from our, from our perspective, and none of them are, not one of them is more safe than, than the other.
Thank you. And then, the second question, could you just share with me the rationale and the thinking of not extending it all the way to West Maine and ending at Elm?
Yeah. So, bringing it all the way to West Maine would force somebody in a vehicle traveling northbound to make a decision at that West Maine and Santa Cruz location. Our concern is that they'll make the decision to turn left there, and so now they're into essentially a residential area, and we wouldn't be encouraging them to use a residential area for cut-through. And so, by leaving it at Elm, we actually let them commit to the downtown before they have to make that decision, and then they're in the downtown already. We get the benefit of having them in the downtown, and then we guide them or direct them towards parking, and then ultimately the outlet on University. Secondary to that is if we have all of the vehicles turning- is if we have all of the vehicles turning right at Main Street, then we get a bit of a congestion at University and Main, where it's already a congested intersection. So the vehicles that would normally continue straight, where we're encouraging them to go straight, would all sort of come together at that University and Main intersection. And we'd have to do a significant amount of traffic timing and work to adjust that, and it may just be too much volume for that intersection.
Any more questions for Director Morley? Seeing none, we will move on to the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on the subject, please present a card to the clerk. Our first speaker is Randy Chen.
Good evening, council. Thank you for considering this proposal. So while we're discussing these options, I just want you to consider the reasons that we're doing it. Are we addressing traffic flow, or economic vitality, or both? Because I feel like the proposal C is so different than proposals A and B, that when you come to a decision, we just think about what we're trying to get out of it. So although a pedestrian-only portion of North Santa Cruz is very enticing, as in proposal C, and personally, I would love to see a larger portion of that, but that's not a chamber thing, that's just me. This section in proposal C is too small to really impact most of the businesses. And part of the impetus behind making North Santa Cruz one-way is to widen the sidewalks and making it more pedestrian-friendly and opening out space for outdoor seating and other programming events. And this section is not really large enough to give us ample information on that. So while ultimately, none of these may be the permanent solution, we must try something that will give us enough data to move forward. And of the three proposals, the chamber believes that proposal A is the one that will do that the best. With this proposal, with the bike lane and angled parking and no parallel parking on one side, it will simulate the wider sidewalks that we envision. It will allow the businesses to utilize the open space where those parking, those parallel parking spaces were, at least on the one side, while at the same time, we can evaluate the effects of the one-way street. And as you know, the biggest concern of the downtown businesses is traffic and parking. So this option allows us to see how the new traffic flow impacts the area, as well as offers a way to see how wider sidewalks would affect pedestrian traffic and the business. And so we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. We have questions. We'll go with Vice Mayor Jensen.
Ms. Chen, thank you. Did the chamber consider at all option B with eliminating the parallel parking on the west side of the street, or at least some of the parallel parking?
Well, no, just because that wasn't an option.
Wasn't an option, so you didn't think of new ideas. Okay.
Sorry. I mean, we think of new ideas all the time.
I know, but that's fine. Thanks.
Councilmember Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor. So the problem, you know, my first reaction to A was, we're losing eight parking spaces that we can't get back at all. With option B, we gain 13 that we can then decide how much of that we want to give back to parklets or pedestrian use. But if we go with A, you know, we are taking less parking spaces. Isn't parking one of the concerns of the businesses in the downtown area?
Well, yes, it is a concern, but eight parking spaces is not a huge difference. And I think in the pilot, it's more important to see how the additional space would affect the businesses and whether that would, you know, increase the pedestrian traffic downtown and make it a more desirable place to be.
Okay.
And as the traffic counts have, I mean, we really only have a parking problem during lunch, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Well, not lunch, about four hours.
One follow-up, if I could. The other issue with A, though, is, as I pointed out, with A, you're putting programming parklet and more sidewalk on the side that doesn't have the restaurants. So is that really going to work?
You know, we, I think we need to try it, at least, because if we have the information, when it acts, if we made it a permanent solution, presumably you'd widen both sides. You know, it would be in the middle. But with option B, we're not having wide or anything, so we wouldn't get any information from that. So we're, that's the reason.
Okay.
I mean, I, and by the same token, option C, the only restaurant that's in that little section is The Palms, and they have a huge outdoor seating anyway, so nobody really is benefiting from that section being closed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sehak?
Ms. Chen, so I just want to make sure I understand, and I don't want to mischaracterize your comment. So for option A, would it be fair to say one of the reasons why you're supporting that is because it does give the ability to add the parklets?
Yes.
So if option B added that, would that still meet your goal, as well as the chamber's goal of seeing how it extends that sidewalk?
Sure, but it would need to be the whole way. You couldn't just take a parklet here, a parklet here, a parklet there.
Sure.
Yes, it would.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Chen, you said that the chamber supports alternate A. And I know from your email that you contacted or you sent the word out to chamber members. Does the chamber board have an opportunity to meet on this issue?
No, we meet on Thursday, actually. So no, they haven't. And actually, I sent it not just to chamber members, I sent it to all downtown businesses whose emails I have. You know, we have gone door-to-door, but certain of them won't give it to us for whatever reason. So it was beyond chamber members, but obviously not everyone.
Okay. And then, assuming that we go through the process where the council selects some alternate, and then the staff sends out the word, I would assume in that scenario, the chamber would have the opportunity to try to contact all the businesses, but specifically its board?
Oh, yes. Our board will definitely have their say.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Ms. Chen? Thank you very much. Next speaker is Sue Farwell.
Good evening, Sue Farwell. You have three proposals for the pilot of a one-way street on North Santa Cruz this summer. Unfortunately, all of the three proposals fall short of a true one-way street trial. The option you should consider and approve is a one-way street southbound from Bachman Avenue to West Main Street. You should include the angled parking the entire length and remove the northbound bike lane. The northbound bike lane is unnecessary. It is a one-way street southbound. The southbound traffic should be a shared lane for both bikes and cars. The dedicated bike line, excuse me, the dedicated bike lane south is also unnecessary. Ending the one-way street before West Main Street at Elm will defeat the true one-way street trial. If the desired result is to move traffic as proficiently as possible through downtown for beach traffic, or into downtown for shopping and dining, then the one-way traffic needs to continue south to the end of the core district. This will allow cars to flow freely into the various parking lots or directly onto the freeway. Adding two-lane traffic at the last block will impede the flow of traffic. It will add the distracted driver confusion over the one-way and two-way direction. The one-way street is important to the vitality of our downtown district. Las Gattis needs new energy. It needs pedestrian-friendly sidewalks, more parking, outdoor dining and gathering spaces. Now is the time for the council to act and be bold. Don't go small and shortside yourself on this pilot program. Your decision, your vote, has the potential to help all of the town's residents, as well as our downtown merchants, retailers, and restaurants. If we can help with the flow of beach traffic, if we can help bring more business to the downtown core district, it will be a win for the entire town. We need your help to revitalize the core downtown and help with the flow of traffic. Vote for a complete trial of the one-way street from Bachman to West Main Street.
So Ms. Farwell, I'll ask a question first.
Yes.
If I understand you correctly, we just have one lane of traffic?
Correct.
We have diagonal parking on both sides of the street?
No, one side of the street.
Only on one side of the street? And then we have parklets dispersed throughout?
Yes.
Would those be on the side with the diagonal parking as well, or would those be on the side? I kind of envisioned parklets being wherever the restaurant spaces are.
Correct.
So...
You could do them on both. I've seen them in Oceanside, California, on an angled parking, where they've taken two of the angled parking. And I've seen them also in other towns where they take the two of the parallel parkings. So in this trial, you could do them on either side. You wouldn't be limited, because if you have a bike lane that is now sharing the road, just like Redwood City does, and many of the towns do, you don't have to have, you're not limited to parking on either side. So you could do a parklet on either west or east side if you chose to.
And again, you envisioned the diagonal parking being on the, I guess it would be the left side of the street, or would it matter?
You know, I didn't, I would defer to Matt Morley as to what he felt was the best side for the angled parking. The beauty of a one-way street without having another block of having two-way street is that you know you're only going one way. You're only looking for cars coming out, you know, from the one direction. If bikes are sharing your lane, now you don't have to look to the back and look for a bike that's going to go zooming by you, because they have to follow the rules of the road. And they may, you know, they may be frustrated, because they might be going slower than they can. But bikes need to share the road. And now you can have angled parking west side, angled parking east side, parklets on both sides. This is a trial. It's not the end result. The end result is to revitalize downtown, help with the flow of traffic of the beach traffic, have one-way parking, or one-way, one-direction traffic, angled parking, wide sidewalks. So we've now encouraged a great pedestrian-friendly walking area. All our retail businesses have area for outdoor displays. It's, people see things and go, oh, oh, I love that blouse. Oh, I love that, you know, look at those, that shirt, I love that. I want to go in and shop. And as people are driving by and stuck in beach traffic at one mile an hour, see a great restaurant and say, you know, I'm not going to go to the beach, I'm going to stop here. Or they continue through, and they say, I want to come back to Las Gattis. Look at all these great things that we have. So it's twofold. It's revitalization of the downtown and it's flow of traffic.
I have one more question for you. So does your vision include eliminating the parallel parking?
Ultimately, or on the pilot?
On the pilot. So we would have diagonal parking?
No, no. It does not. No, I believe that if you have a one-way street with a shared bike lane and a shared car lane, that you can have parallel parking on one side, angled parking on both.
Okay. Thank you very much. More questions from anyone else on the desk? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Ke. What was that? Well, tell us when you get up here. Ka. Cro.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Crock. I received this from a friend of mine who is, has a business downtown. So this is sort of the first I've heard about it, just a couple days ago. And I just, I have a couple of questions, and you don't need to ask me any questions, because I don't have any answers. This is for only the summer, correct? And is the southbound on-ramp still closed? Will that still be closed? And why not one-way on North Santa Cruz and one-way on University? Because I'm not quite sure about the return traffic with the A, B, and C. So those are my questions.
Thank you, and I hope those will be answered during our discussion. Is there any more cards on this subject? Yes. Mr. Shepherdson, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the idea, the central idea that I just wanted to get across, and I've sent an email to the council on it, is the idea is, if we're going to do this pilot program, the suggestion that I offer is we paint the street either all white, or maybe more appropriately, all green. And the white reflects the sunlight, so the downtown will be cooler in the summer. The green has that same effect, not as much as the white, but still more than the black that's there. And the beauty of the green is if you look down North Santa Cruz, and you've got the green mountains in the background, and then you have a green road, to me, it fits. Also, so it keeps the downtown cooler. Air conditioning costs are less. It shows that the town is concerned about global warming. And it's another bold way, I heard that, another bold way to revitalize the downtown with a kind of marketing with this green roadway. So, and in LA, they have a pilot program where they're actually painting some streets white for the, for this very fact of reducing the heat in that community. So that's what I offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherdson. Maria Aristo, please bring your card up. If there is anybody else that would like to speak, so there's no lag time, if you can get your cards turned in, that would be great. Thank you.
Sorry. Maria Aristo, 85 Broadway. I was part of the Transportation and Parking Commission discussion, but I'm representing myself. I think the big questions are, what is it that you're trying to accomplish with the one-way pilot? And everything can't be accomplished. You can't push cars through and make it bike and pedestrian-friendly and program extra space. We have a certain amount of space. So I think all of these options represent good compromises. Initially, I thought the only option that met the most goals was option A. I think if we want to attract pedestrians and bikes, I think with all the traffic we've got, bicycles take up a lot less space than cars. If you want to attract bikes downtown, you really want to have bikes to be able to go two ways. So eliminating the contraflow bike lane and having the bikes only go southbound means that cyclists either have to go elsewhere, or you will have more bikes on the sidewalk and more bikes going the wrong way. And I'm not saying that you should change the infrastructure to accommodate poor behavior, but we do know with Vision Zero and the way our staff has been working on bike lanes, that infrastructure can shape behavior. So if you want to make sure you've got the right behavior, you need to look at the infrastructure. That said, I think one of the options that nobody on transportation thought of, which was a good one, is if you do option B, and then you have the opportunity to eliminate, you know, switch around the spaces, don't have dedicated bike lane and have share rows. The downside to share rows is you already see that a lot of cyclists are not comfortable riding in traffic right now on Santa Cruz Avenue. You see a lot of cyclists on the sidewalk. And I know plenty of people that will not want to ride in traffic. So maybe we have other options. The cyclists go on University, they go down the alleys, they go through the parking lots, they go somewhere else. But those are things to consider. I do think that a car coming out and making a turn, where you've got bikes coming toward you from the left, if they're turning left to go southbound on Santa Cruz Avenue, and cars coming the other way, they'll just have to get used to the fact that they're making a left turn. They always have to look to the left now. They just have to treat this one-way street as a two-way. Bikes one way and cars the other. I think it could potentially be harder for cyclists to adapt, but everybody's going to have to compromise. I think initially, something needs to be tried, and I think whatever you do is going to cause a lot of people to be unhappy for the first month while they sort it out. And everybody who is happy won't say anything, so you'll hear a lot of flack. And I think a lot can be learned, and I think it would be a great idea to try something. So that's all I have. The other thing I wanted to say is if you do do one-way, Chicago, San Francisco, San Jose are all Vision Zero cities. They all have contrafolk bike lanes on their one-way streets. They acknowledge that cycling is important, and that they want cyclists to have preferential treatment. So that's just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Romano? Is that correct?
It is. Oh, excuse me. Yes, it is. I represent Andrea, I'm Andrea Romano from Tontonovee on Main Street. I just wanted to further support the adoption of Pilot A with the removal of the bike lane and the extension to, of the one-way street to Main Street. The main reason is, is because we also have to consider the fact that we still have merchants and restaurants on Main Street that are going to be impacted by this change. And I think if you confuse the pedestrians around the one-way street and try to get them to turn before Main Street, it's going to become a problem. You can paint the road along North Santa Cruz with bike pictograms to allow people to know that bikes are permitted on that road. I think the road speed is slow enough that obviously bikes can co-mingle with vehicles, and it will allow bikes to use that space as well. And then it leaves us more space to provide the angled parking and the parklet. us more space to provide the angled parking and the parklets that we're looking for. I also would encourage the adoption of parklets on Main Street in front of the restaurants that are there. We are looking for a way to additionally revitalize that space by adopting outdoor seating for our guests in the area. And I recognize that it's important that we adopt spaces for bikes to travel into downtown Los Gatos. But again, I think the questions are still out there about what is our purpose? And if our purpose is to attract people from out of the area, we're not going to get people shopping and dining if they're only on bicycles. So we need to bring people into the town in order to facilitate revitalizing the businesses that are in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Morimoto.
Good evening. Ed Morimoto, 460 Monterey Avenue. First of all, I just want to say, I think it's great that the town is considering piloting something like this. I think this is one of those things that you can only really know if it's good or bad, and what are the pluses and minuses by doing. I think we can intellectualize it all we want, but it's kind of, proof is in the pudding, so I think that's great. I'll offer a slightly contrarian point of view, from the cyclist's point of view. And so in some ways, I'll agree with Maria Aristo, and others, and others ways I'll disagree. So I actually think, for the purposes of a pilot, I am not particularly keen on keeping the contraflow bike lane, for a number of reasons. I think that Maria was correct, in the sense that they have worked in other locations, and I think as a long-term permanent solution, maybe that should be something that should be considered. But I think in the context of a pilot, where people are going to be adjusting to the new flow and new rules as it is, to then introduce that, well, when you're making a left-hand turn onto Santa Cruz Avenue, you only have cars coming from the right, but you also have to look for bikes coming from the left. And as one who's been a victim of a accident that was a car not seeing a cyclist, when they're very car-centric in terms of what they're looking for, I think that there's actually potentially some incremental risk to cyclists who would be coming in that contraflow lane. So again, I think from a long-term perspective, having bicyclists be able to go both ways as a way to encourage bike and ped on Santa Cruz Avenue, I think is a good thing. I think for the purposes of a pilot, and to see if we can get some of these other benefits that we're looking for, I think it's perfectly acceptable to make cyclists follow the same rules that the cars will be, in that they would have to be traveling in only one direction on Santa Cruz Avenue. So that's it.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, I have no more cards, so I will close the public hearing on this item, and we will go to council for discussion. Mr. Rennie has his hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Question. So I guess when I started this, I was thinking, whatever option we pick is going to be close to, hopefully, a final solution. And then I started realizing that that doesn't have to be true at all, that we can pick a pilot that gives us the maximum out of information on the different pieces. And I think that's sort of the way staff may be thinking. So I, in trying to accept option A a little better, I wanted to ask a question. So my concern with option A is, the pro, you effectively, certainly with the contra-bike lane, although I guess you could take that off, it forces you to have the program space on the east side away from the restaurants. So my question is, are we planning during this pilot, next summer, to do any programming of the space? Are we going to put any parklets in at all? If not, then maybe it really doesn't matter which side of the street we try closing off.
So we wouldn't be putting any major infrastructure in place for the sake of the pilot. I think the investment on that would be extremely significant. That said, I think some of the opportunities include potentially doing, sort of in a section of the unprogrammed area, a ramp that allows for the accessibility to the space, and then working with the adjacent businesses to be able to use the space. So if it's, if there's a restaurant adjacent or nearby, perhaps they could put a couple tables and some chairs out there. Or if there's a retail restaurant, a retail shop, they could, they could have some sort of plan for how they might want to utilize the space, that kind of a thing. Sort of a soft programming from our perspective.
So they would just put them on the pavement, put some tables and chairs on the pavement?
Yes.
And what would there be, barrier-wise, to protect anybody there?
So you've got a bike lane, and the bike lane would be buffered from the vehicle travel with, and it doesn't show in the diagram, but between, so you can see the five-foot bike lane between the vehicles and the parklet, and then we would do a, like a cone-type, a delineator-type barricade between the vehicles and the bike lane. So you have some separate, some physical separation there.
So you're convincing me that option B might be better, because this soft programming would be occurring on the side of the street, where we probably would want to do it in a final design, then?
Yeah, I think each of the options, and that's why we've got them in front of, each of the options has their pros and their cons. I would concede absolutely that option, option B does provide that extra, that extra sort of pedestrian-type area, or programming-type area, that the others don't have that would be useful. Although, as the council came up with the idea already of allowing, in the other option, to allow the parking on, to allow, giving up some of the extra parking spaces to do parklets on the other side, that's a viable option as well.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
It's not a question. I was just going to start in with the discussion. Thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you for the input. When I think about the purpose of this, when I first thought about it, though these many years ago, my purpose was to move traffic to the freeway, and to get a, get a one-way street to do that, and with the added bonus that we would be able to widen our sidewalks and eliminate parking. So I'm happy to see that we're moving in that direction. But I agree with Ms. Farwell that in order to get the traffic to the freeway, it has to go through Main. There are businesses down there, and it's illogical. If I'm going to have that southbound, I'd rather let them go to the park. I understand the issue with University and Main potentially, but I can also see a ton of confusion and traffic if I'm trying to get off at Elm. And it makes more sense for me to have a signal that I can control, that people know where that signal is. So that's the observation on that. I would rather have it go all the way through. I can see starting it at Bachman, because no one will figure it out, and we give them time to figure it out. With respect to which option, I am a fan of option B, because I agree with Mr. Morimoto, that I believe a bicyclist going the wrong way is counterintuitive. If I've turned that street into one-way south, I'm not going to be looking for anyone to come the other way. So I think we ought to just go all-in for the south, and let the bicyclist share it on the west side. And if I went with option B, I would not keep all those parallel parkings. I would look for opportunities to do diagonal, or allow some kind of space that's going to allow a parklet, or street furniture, or something that is going to make that interesting. Because people may not just want to sit and eat or drink. They may want to sit their kid down and enjoy the street, or look at a retail business. So I don't want to think about it just in terms of where is a restaurant, but I want to think about it in terms of what can we put out there? Can we, you know, put a cornhole game, or, you know, whatever. So I would be for option B. I would go through to Main, and I would leave open the option to eliminate some or all of that parallel parking on the west side.
Thank you. Councilmember Rennie.
Okay, thank you. I thought maybe you were going to call on yourself, but I'll go ahead. I'm going to say that my thought on the one-way street is opposite. I'm thinking one-way street is a way to gain space for potentially more parking, and more pedestrian activity, and the parklets. I fail to see how a one-way street with only one lane, I mean, if we made a one-way street with two lanes, we could move more cars. How do we move, we are one lane going south now. If we get rid of the lane going north, how does that make that lane go faster? So I'm failing to see that this is a way to move cars. If we want to move cars, we should close all of the crosswalks, so no pedestrians get in the way. And what I thought we were trying to do is activate the street with more pedestrians. So that means people crossing the street, that means traffic going slow. I fail to see this as an exercise in trying to move cars. If we're thinking about beach traffic, the backup is going to be them trying to get on the highway, so we could move them down faster till they hit the roadblock of cars in front of them. So I guess I disagree with Councilmember Jensen in that, in that part of it.
All right, I will chime in. I've been thinking about this a lot for about five or six years. And I visited downtown Burlingame a number of years ago, when they redid their streetscape. And what they did was, they added more street furniture, made the sidewalks nice and wide, put bicycle racks out. They actually repaved the sidewalks very nicely. They took away parallel parking. They left the street two ways, but they made it more pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly. And when they took away the parallel parking, the objective was to put in a parking garage to more than make up for the parking that they were losing. As I sat here, and I listened to the public, and I listened to the other councilmembers speak, I was thinking, maybe we're thinking too hard here tonight. Maybe we leave it two lanes, northbound and southbound, but take the parallel parking and make it diagonal parking. Don't worry about the bike lane. Let's see how many parking places we can add. And then we can eliminate some spots that are previously there, and add parklets, particularly in front of the restaurant areas. We're not going to get essentially permanent sidewalks, because this is just a pilot program right now. But by adding the parklets in front of the restaurant spaces, and adding the diagonal parking, we'll increase the parking, we could keep the traffic the two-way. I've been thinking about the one-way traffic situation, and I go back to the Blossom Hill Road situation that we all suffered through a couple months ago. And it just shows you the impact on our whole town when we block off a road going in one direction. And it's not just beach traffic days, it would be every day. It's like you have four or five of these arteries in your heart, and then you plug one of them up, and you start to feel the pain. So I was thinking, why don't we just leave it two ways, and add diagonal parking as much as we can, and throw parklets in there in front of the restaurant areas? And that might be a better vision. I'm interested in hearing what other councilmembers have to say. Councilmember Seok.
Well, if it's okay with the mayor, I am curious to know, from an engineering standpoint, if you could keep two lanes and do diagonal parking. So if I could ask staff that question?
No, there's not enough real estate to be able to make that happen.
Okay. So then, if I can, if I can follow up on that, really to, if the goal is to try the diagonal parking, it has to be limited to one way?
That's correct.
And then, just out of curiosity, do you know, in terms of seconds, how much you save with your, you're doing parallel parking versus diagonal?
I don't know. I don't know that it's a whole big difference. I think you've got some different challenges in terms of safety and vehicles backing out versus vehicles backing into a parallel parking space, and the challenges of time from that perspective.
Okay.
But I don't have a time for you.
So really, diagonal just increases the amount you can stack on one side?
That's correct.
Okay. And then again, I know that this is something that's going to continually have feedback. We have our Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. I keep going back to what's the safest, and I've heard conflicting. And I trust our bicyclists out there. But for me, it's intuitive that you ride with the traffic. Any informal feedback that you've gotten from any of our, from anyone from that commission?
Let's see if Ms. Peterson got any feedback, because we did send it out to them.
Thank you. Thank you. It's not working again. Lisa Peterson, Town Engineer. I did not get any feedback from the BPAC on that.
Yeah, so the response was that there was no feedback from, from the BPAC on the item. And the meetings didn't align, so that we were unable to bring it officially as an agenda item.
Any other comments or motion from council?
If I could make a couple clarifications on the comments I heard, I wanted to make sure that I explained the one-way, and how it works with Main Street, in case I was unclear on that one. So the one-way street, as it hits Elm, would, the southbound direction would continue. So the traffic would be able to continue to Main Street. But at that point, it would be a, at Elm, it would be a two-way traffic, much as it is today. So that allows traffic to move through Main Street in the northbound direction into the downtown, and it continues to allow southbound traffic to head towards, sort of, towards Main Street, past Main Street to South 17. So just because the one-way street pilot sort of ends at that point, the two-way street would handle the traffic volume. In terms of moving, is moving cars the goal? I think by doing a single-street one-way like this, we concede that there's going to be some capacity reduction in the downtown. And I think that's part of the trial for a pilot, is to make sure that that's something that we can, that we can stomach in terms, in terms of how it impacts the rest of the town. So I think we're acknowledging that it doesn't move cars in both directions the same way as, as a two-way street does. And then I hit the two-way, the diagonal parking, there just isn't, unfortunately, isn't enough real estate to be able to do it if we maintain two-way traffic.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
A question for Mr. Morley. If we were to decide to end at Elm, as is proposed here, what would be the signal to the northbound traffic that now they have to leave?
So they would have a forced turn there, so we would use infrastructure to make them turn right at that particular point.
So a barricade, a sign, a something?
We tried to make it a little attractive.
And I don't, I don't know if you asked the business community, but I guess that if I'm coming, and you want to force me to go into downtown, if I'm confronted with seeing a big old barrier, I'm probably not going to do that. So I don't know if that was thought about or discussed with anyone?
So certainly something we would, we would want to experience. I think our biggest concern was what was going to happen at Main, in terms of cars going left and right, hitting University, and sort of overwhelming that intersection at Main Street, and then alternatively turning left at Main, and entering the Almond Grove, and using that as sort of an alternative route, since they can't go north. So if you envision yourself driving north on, on South Santa Cruz Avenue, approaching Main Street, if you have to make your decision at Main Street, you've got three ways to go. And chances are, you're going to choose one of the ways we don't want you to go. If we leave it at Elm Street, then you only have one way you can go. And so we keep those cars in the downtown.
Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. So maybe I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept option B. I had considered, I really think about whether the bike lane should be there or not. And then I remember, what we're really doing is a pilot. So let's, I'm saying, well, let's leave option B the way it is with the bike lane, and see how many bikes really use it. Because again, my, my thought of the real value of this is adding parking and adding pedestrian space. If we remove the bike lane, we could do diagonal parking on both sides, which adds a lot, I assume that's correct.
Unfortunately, there's not enough room to do diagonal parking on both sides, because of the amount of space that we need. So even with a, with a one-way and a bike lane, I think we're maximizing the use of the space there.
Okay. Well, either way, I'm saying, go ahead with the, with option B as it is. So I'll just leave that as my simple motion, option B.
Vice Mayor.
So I'd be willing to second the motion if it included an option to eliminate some of that parallel parking on the west side for parklet or other programming. Because option B retains parallel parking on the west.
Yes, I agree. That was sort of my, my thought, and I, I'm glad you thought about it. I was assuming we would do that. But so yes, I would add that to my motion, that we would eliminate some of that, so we would have the soft programming going on.
Then I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, I will say nay. And we will move on to item number six. Thank you, everybody who participated in that hearing. This is the Annual Street Repair and Resurfacing Project. Ms. Peterson will be doing our staff report on this.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Lisa Peterson, Assistant Parks and Public Works Director, Town Engineer. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about the Annual Street Repair and Resurfacing Project Report. That report is broken into two areas. The first area is requesting that the council approve the plans and specifications and authorize bidding for an overlay project on two major streets within the town of Los Catos. One of those is, um, Blossom Hill Road from Los Catos Boulevard to Santa Cruz Avenue. The other one is National Avenue from Los Catos Almond Den up to Samaritan Drive. Both of these streets were identified previously, um, in council reports or in resolutions. National Avenue was identified last year by the council as a street where we would be using SB 1 funds for an overlay in 2019. Blossom Hill Road was identified previously in a recent council report to council with staff recommending including that in the overlay project because of the pavement degradation that is happening on that stretch of pavement. The second part of the report is really, uh, requesting that the council receive an update on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission Consultants' review of town pavement and look at those budget options. And that is what I am planning on focusing on my discussion on tonight. And I have a couple of slides that I wanted to talk to with council. So first, I just wanted to give some quick background information. Last year, the town did receive a PTAP 19 grant from, from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, or MTC. And what that allowed MTC to do was to hire a consultant at MTC's, um, expense, a pavement consultant, and they hired QES to assess 107 miles of the town's street pavements. Now, uh, QES has provided us with some preliminary information from that assessment. So one of the things that they have, um, determined is that the overall pavement condition index on town streets is a 69. Now, this is out of 100. So 100 being a, the best pavement, a recently overlaid street, zero being a failed pavement. So 69 is considered fair condition category. Uh, to be in the good condition category, pavements would need to be 70 or above. QES also did provide some budget scenarios for the town to, uh, review, council to review that would help to increase the town's overall pavement condition index beyond what our current five-year budget will allow. And that final report from QES will be available for review in the spring of this year. Oops, sorry. Uh, so before we get into those options, I did want to show council this pavement degradation curve. This is something that council has seen several times before when we've been talking about pavements. And this shows how pavement degrades over time. And I think the important part of this chart is what it shows is it's much more cost-effective for jurisdictions to maintain their streets in good condition, in that good condition category and as opposed to allowing them to drop into the, um, more deteriorated condition categories. And that is why at the town, we do have a very robust program for both slurry seals and rubber cape seals. That does allow us to pick up a lot of those streets that are in the better condition category and keep them in that good condition category. And that is a very cost-effective way to, uh, run the pavement maintenance program. So to get into the budget options that were provided by MTC's pavement consultant, QES, um, first of all, they did assess, uh, the town's current annual pavement budget for the next five years. And that does show that we will have about $2.9 million a year for the next five years. And this, uh, it's important to note that this does include SB 1 funding and also Measure B funding. And what that would allow is it would allow the town's overall pavement condition index to increase by 20, 23 to a 72. Now, should the council wish to increase that pavement condition index beyond that to a 73, what it would require would be an additional $600,000 annually for the next five years to get to a 73. To get to a 75 would require an additional annual, um, addition to that pavement budget of $1.2 million. To get to a 79 would require an additional $3.1 million annually. Now, it's important to note that once the town's pavements do get into that good category, it does allow the town to have more flexibility with the Measure B dollars. So those Measure B dollars do not then necessarily have to be used on pavement maintenance. And the other thing, uh, that is important to note as well is as the pavement condition index increases, it does give us, um, a little bit more bandwidth to reach down and pull up more of those streets that are in the poor condition category and get them back up into the good condition category. Uh, so tonight, we are not asking for any, um, action from the council on these budget options from QES. This is for council's information as you're moving into budget discussions in the near future. And that's the end of my report and I'm, uh, here to answer any questions that you might have on the council report or on the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions, Ms. Peterson. Um, on page five, where this chart is actually in our staff report, um, it indicates that if the council were to determine that we wanted to do that $600,000, we would have to do it next week at our special meeting for our strategic priorities, not at a budgeting meeting? Am I correct in that?
Uh, no, I think that ultimately that would be a discussion that the council would have at that time, but I would pass that over to the town manager.
So the first opportunity for council to set budget direction for the next fiscal year would be next week when we talk about strategic priorities. We do have some one-time money from a surplus of, uh, funds from last fiscal year. And so council may choose to move some of that towards this purpose or other town needs.
Thank you. I'm, I'm assuming we'll be reminded of that next week?
Yes.
Um, and please remind me, the threshold for Measure B discretionary spending is PCI 72, right?
70.
70, okay.
Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, what, question, first question, um, when are we going, when will we be reevaluating our streets again? I know we don't do this every year.
It will happen every three years.
Every three years, okay. And then I, I guess at this point, I just want to give a shout out, um, for your notes, um, in our staff report about the reusing the pavement and how that actually is going to take a little bit longer, but it's, um, has environmental benefat, benefits. So I don't think you mentioned that, but it was in our staff report and I wanted to highlight it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Seok.
So Ms. Peterson, I just want to make sure I understand page five. Um, so right now, is it true that our PCI is at 69 or it will be at 69 next year after, um, after this action?
So it's currently at a 69.
Okay. And with, um, if, if nothing were to change and the current budget for pavement were to continue, would we get to 70? Is it, could you predict that for next year?
I don't believe we'd get there next year, no.
Okay. So somewhere between now and 2023 with the current allotment of 2.9?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions also. Uh, the QES analysis is not complete. When will it be complete?
They typically, um, give the final report in the spring. I think last time we received it in April.
All right, so we won't have it prior to our priority setting, but we might have it prior to some other milestone. All right, and what about the, uh, the, the, the B funds? When will we be getting an update on that, Measure B?
So the, um, we did have a discussion, discussion with VTA and, uh, VTA does believe that the Measure B funds will be released for next, um, fiscal year. So we will have the ability to use them at that time. Um, ultimately, we don't have a decision yet, but that was the information that we were given from VTA.
And understanding that you said that they would be released, do you have an understanding of when the town would, uh, have an inkling of the amount of money they would be getting?
So in the report, it does show a breakdown of, um, the funding that we do get and from Measure B. Um, and so what it shows is that on a yearly basis, we're going to be getting $580,000. However, we did not receive, uh, funds last year because of the lawsuit, so we would be receiving double.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Uh, it would be helpful to know if it's possible to calculate before next week in strategic planning, uh, when, under the current budget, we would get to 70 and what it would take monetarily to get to 70 sooner than 2023. If we didn't spend any more money, when will we get to 70? If we did spend more money, when will we get to 70? Be very helpful to know.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. I see no more hands up, so we will go to the public for the public hearing. I have no cards on this item. If anybody wants to speak, now's your chance. Looks like no one will be speaking on this, so we will close the public hearing and go back to council for more discussion and/or motions. Councilmember Seok.
Okay, um, I have no other comments, um, other than, uh, we continue to look at this and it sounds like we continue to strive for a PCI of 70. So the information that you could provide next to would be helpful. But for tonight, I do recommend that the town council approve the plans and specs for the annual street repair and resurfacing project and authorize the town manager to advertise the project for bid, um, authorizing that amount to, uh, to be in the amount not to exceed $2,190,000, including contingencies.
We have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's more. Um, authorize staff to execute feature change orders, not to exceed 10% of the contract award amount and, uh, to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the City of San Jose for pavement work. As well as to receive an update from MTC on town pavement and budget options.
Okay, so items one through five on the staff report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second from the vice mayor. Further discussion or comments? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be moving on to item number seven, which is considering rescinding the solution 2017-008 and adopting a replacement resolution establishing the Town Council Finance Committee. And delivering our staff report will be our town manager, Ms. Laurel Pervetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, at the December 18th council meeting, the council requested an agenda item to clarify the role of the finance committee. This item is now before you this evening. The recommendation before you is based on the great work of the town council and the accomplishments of the finance committee. As noted in the written report, the committee historically has included two council member and members and in the past only met once or twice a year. The primary focus was the review of the comprehensive financial, uh, report. Um, and in 2017, the scope of the committee was broadened to advise the council on potential measures to address the town's unfunded pension liabilities as well as its unfunded, um, post-employment benefit liabilities, otherwise known as OPEB. The council at that point also appointed three non-voting residents to the committee. As such, as I mentioned before, the committee accomplished its task, leading to the creation of a pension trust to address that unfunded liability. This work complemented the town council's efforts to address pension and OPEB obligations dating back as far as 2009. So it essentially continued that trend that the council was already addressing. In addition, the town council has formulated a pension and OPEB trust oversight committee with all of its fiduciary responsibilities. And it is the appropriate venue here and day forward to review the actuarial information, examine the trust performance and modify investment strategies. The public is certainly welcome to attend the oversight committee and provide input prior to the committee making any of those decisions. It's important to also note that pension and OPEB, uh, unfunded liabilities remain a council priority. At this point, the decisions to make additional lump sum payments directly to CalPERS or to put more money in those two trusts is really a council budgetary decision. And this decision would occur after considering public comments on all of the town needs. So again, there's a, currently a public forum for the council to listen to its public before making those budgetary decisions. If the council would like more resident input on its budget decisions, there are certainly other mechanisms to accomplish that goal. And staff is very much, um, akin to what those other options are and we're available to discuss those for you. It's very important that if council does want more input on its budget decisions, that we consider broad public engagement on those important issues, given all of the town's needs. Resident input is important in all of the town's decision-making, particularly when considering potential new revenue options. For this reason, uh, the town staff believes that it is timely for the council to update the finance committee's enabling resolution as recommended in the attachment to your report with no change to the composition of the finance committee. Staff is available to answer any of the council's questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pervetti. Do we have any questions from council or discussion at this time? Councilmember Spector.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Pervetti, if you could just verbalize and you talk and I'll write it down, so we're all on the same page, uh, what the difference is between the new proposed resolution and the prior resolution?
So, um, as noted in the, uh, report and within the different exhibits, there's been an update, um, to the whereas statements. But most importantly, the main changes all address the, um, the function of the committee and its advisory capacity to the town council. So the proposed resolution would retain the role of the finance committee in its annual review of the town's investment policy. It retains the role of an annual review of the comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, and it retains the review and recommendations regarding new and increased revenue sources. Uh, the two items that are proposed for elimination is the, uh, annual review of proposals regarding the OPEB and pension liabilities. As noted before, we've pretty much exhausted all of those solutions. Uh, and that was also confirmed by our actuarial consultant, uh, Mr. Bartel. And so there's really no need for the finance committee to discuss that any longer. We're on a path. Um, and then also the elimination of special projects as directed by the council manager or finance director. We've learned through, uh, this committee and through other commissions that our, we get more effective, uh, service if we're more focused on what the actual purpose of the committee is.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public testimony. We have one card so far. Mr. Leaf, ago.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and town manager. Um, I, my view is a little different than what we've just heard. And that is that without prior discussion or notice, I was surprised by the proposed amendments to the finance committee, um, the, the bylaws. This follows more than three and a half years of discussions led by residents at the council meetings of how the council could leverage a unique asset in our town. Very well-qualified citizens who would volunteer their time, knowledge and experience in sophisticated financial matters to help our council and staff manage our town's finances. This agenda item and the changes were a surprise as there was no indication by anyone on the committee or council of such a need. Again, a little different than what we just heard. Further, the last two years, we have benefited from the significant donated time, energy, research, enhanced civic knowledge that was gained and analytical skills of town-vetted, this council vetted this committee, of senior financial professionals to recommend ways of earning, saving, allocating and optimizing our town's funds while also better understanding the background and consequences of such actions, whether implemented or not implemented. For example, they have researched, provided analysis and suggested guidance that are not always reported at beating minutes to the, to their finance committee. not always reported at beating minutes to their finance committee council delegates and also the full council on funds management. Especially are growing now more than, total about $65 million of retirement obligations, and that's growing at over 7% per year, and it compounds annually. These numbers were not well-known or understood a few years ago, nor their growth rates and potential consequences communicated to the council members or residents. Also, they, with other citizen input, found more than $12 million in misclassified funds sitting in another reserve account earning no interest. By sending $10 million of those dollars to CalPERS, they would save at least $700,000 annually, and that approximates the amount of money that we're going to be earning in the new sales tax. Let's better use the funds we have and optimize earnings. Reduce the role of the finance committee, reduce his research, analysis, and possible quality of decision-making and proper communication within the council members, the staff, and certainly our residents, so that we all better understand the implications of our town's finances. And specifically, removing Article J5, as was just vocalized, eliminates the ability of the town council, town manager, or the finance director to also assign additional Vote no on C.
Thank you. Mr. Figo, we have a question from the vice mayor.
Thanks, just a couple of questions. I'm looking at our existing resolution, and J5 says special projects as directed by the town council, the town manager, or finance director. And I know that the finance committee has requested different documents and has done their own project management and research and request that hasn't been directed by the town council, the town manager, or the finance director. How, so that's not within the purview of what you should be doing, because it hasn't been directed, so how does that?
Rationalized?
Yeah.
In order to gain background information, to make a more informed, not just decision, but discussion, to help the two council members who are on the finance committee have background and information, as well as for the full council to have background and information, some research needs to be done, some analysis needs to be done, and that's why those committee members have done that type of work.
Okay, and just?
You can't look at an item in isolation. It's got to be in the context. Sorry.
But I can. Would you agree with me that budgeting is something that should be done by elected officials?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, no more questions. Next speaker, Jack Van Ada.
Everybody wants progress, but nobody wants change. What I believe has been happening for the two years of the finance committee's existence is the change process has created tonight's opportunity for improvement. I also believe this change is what the council wanted to happen when they voted to establish the finance committee. To my knowledge, these past three years have been the first time the town finances have been so thoroughly scrutinized. Restrictions were placed on the finance committee, presumably so that they did not interfere with staff duties. The finance committee is a highly-trained information resource for both the council and the staff. Unfortunately, it appears that some are viewing the finance committee as competition, and that can't be further from the truth. Financial issues were discovered because they were there to be found. Correcting them would make the town work more effectively going forward. For the first year, the finance committee was politically correct and following the lead of staff, but the changes necessary to improve the system were eliminated by the agenda process and the rules established in the resolution. It is like using 25% of your brain's capacity. The citizens' group did not remain quiet and kept producing more data that showed our budget and reporting processes to be well behind that of the private sector where competition drives constant improvement. There is little to no competition in government accounting to drive improvement, so it has to be done from within. The budget is critical as a management tool that the town does not use to its full potential. Our budget was, as constructed, cannot be effectively compared to the most important measurement tool that we have, which is the CAFR. It is my opinion that the finance committee should serve in the expanded role as an advisor both to the staff and the council in a collaborative role, not a competitive role. The finance committee does not need to be involved in the establishment of the budget, but rather a review and information resource for the council and the staff. I would also advocate the citizens have the right to vote. After all, this is only an advisory committee, and thus far, with only two members, there's several times there's been split votes with no advocacy going either way. The finance committee should have the ability to look everywhere in the town finances so that they can see the big picture. Understanding the budget is necessary for the finance committee to make better judgment calls for the town and evaluating the town's performance. Hopefully, this evening's decision will not be a compromise by leaving the finance committee where it is today. There's a loss to the town council and the staff. We need to have a collaborative process to solve problems, leaving egos at the door.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, John Shepperson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. Just a sort of a general statement, and that is that it seems to me, if we ask this question, does the town of Los Gatos have revenue and expenditure challenges or budgetary challenges? And are they significant? And I would suggest they are significant, and we've seen that in our roads, and we see it on our pensions. And so it seems to me that if we have citizens that are willing to devote their time and expertise, and considerable expertise, to assisting the town in providing meaningful information to address a problem, then to me, that's an asset, that's a resource. And so it seems to me that we would want to give them the broadest possible mandate to look at expenditures and revenues. For example, let's say our contract with Monty Sorino. Well, we know that the contract brings in revenue, but how much does it cost the town? And so if we look at both sides of it, then we can make a better decision, it seems to me. So that's just a general statement, that we give them a broad mandate to look at the entire budget for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Catherine Summers.
Good evening, council. My name's Catherine Summers with the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce. Couple of words come to mind when I think of the finance committee, and those are knowledge, information, transparency, collaboration, and engagement. First of all, I love what the finance committee has done, because they have some knowledge that they brought to the table that isn't from a town government perspective. It is from the private sector, and although it's not always, cannot always help with making decisions, or I should say, it's not always the right decision, what they are bringing to the table, they give us a different perspective on how we can look at some of the town's finances. Second, it's information. I've never gotten so much information about the town's finances, so I feel more equipped to do, to be better at my role in town and explain to people what is actually going on with the town's finances. So I really appreciate what the finance committee has done for me and for the town. Transparency, I think it's really important that this day and age, that our town council and town staff is as transparent as possible, and I think if you strip the, if you take away this finance committee in the way that you're suggesting, that the town residents will feel that it is not at all transparent anymore as to what everybody is doing on the other side, your side. The collaboration, I would agree with Jack Van Ada in saying that we are so much stronger working together, and I think if you eliminate the duties of the town finance committee, that will really be seen as a non-collaborative effort. And lastly, engagement. Just as the chamber executive director, I work so hard to get people to be engaged and to volunteer for activities or to come to town council meetings, and the fact that you had three, now you still have two very engaged citizens, is a huge testament, I think, to the staff and to the council that you've been able to accomplish that. And two, I think you really will drive them away, and no one else will ever want to do this again, if we eliminate them from all of their responsibilities. So I hope you will consider keeping them, keeping that committee intact with the same responsibilities that they've had. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards, so I will close the public testimony on this, and we'll go to council for discussion and/or motions. Mr. Rennie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can, I'm going to ask Mr. Andrews to help me, because I'm going to talk, I've got several things to say here. Let me start off by saying I found working side by side with the resident volunteers on the finance committee extremely educational on our finances in ways that would never occur if the discussion was only between staff and council members. Our finance department runs lean and mean and does not have that much time to think differently about the ways we have always done things or put much thought into providing information in ways that non-government, non-accountant can think strategically about. Mr. Tinsley sent us an email that I agree with, where he points out, "Over time, an organization tends to do things the way they have always done it, and some longstanding practices may become inappropriate or suboptimal," his words, and I agree. Experts in accounting that have not been involved in these longstanding practices can provide insight that can help us improve or change when times change, like our mounting pension liabilities. I think a good example of it taking several iterations of information from staff and help from citizens with this outside view to help me realize that the information from staff, staff is providing was not the best and not enough in doing our analysis of how much cash should be in our internal service funds. Staff is providing us, they think more like a CAFR, because that's a big part of the information they have to provide or generate, and it's, the CAFR is good for reporting, but I think it's suboptimal for strategic thinking. So this is where I want to kind of bring us back to our December 18th meeting. If the council members remember these graphs that we looked at last time, and I thought the exercise was to understand how much cash is in our funds and how much gets spent. And if you recall this, I have up here the Internal Services Fund, and I asked the question at the time, after one of the residents talked about how much cash, and I asked, "Well, how come his cash amount doesn't match up with our plot?" And the, so like the last blue bar is about $6 million, and I asked, "Well, why didn't that match up with the cash that one resident was trying to calculate from it all?" And the answer I got was, "Oh, well, it might not match because there's liabilities." And at the time, I thought, "Well, yeah, sure, that makes sense. You know, we, in the next few months, we've got liabilities, you know, at any given time, especially with a CAFR, you take a snapshot, so you still have liabilities you're going to have to pay." So I said, "Well, okay, that makes sense." If you could switch to the next page for me? Yes, please. But when I went and looked at the CAFR, and I highlighted a couple lines here, what I found was, they weren't short-term liabilities. That graph has the cash in that, in those total funds, they've reduced it by the pension liabilities, which is $2.4 million. So this is a long-term liability, so that means there's really $2.4 million more in that fund that we're not thinking about than what showed up on that graph before. So what I'm trying to illustrate is, staff again was thinking, "Well, they gave us the plot from the CAFR without really helping us think strategically about what was the cash in there." And then if you could put up the second item here, if you recall, I sent a question to staff about, "Well, how much money is really being spent?" And they, it was a council referral, you got an email, "How much money is really being spent each year in the equipment replacement fund?" And the answer they gave was, this, the orange line here, you can't see very well, was, we're averaging, I think it's $600,000 a year, is our average spending from the equipment replacement fund. But I noticed, if you look at the large orange bar, that's when we took money out for the Almond Grove. So if you remember, part of the discussion was, part of the answer, or the, part of the answer was, you spend from the fund, but you also transfer out for capital projects and for depreciation and other things. So that's part of the spending, not just the spending that you see in the fund line items. But I think it completely distorts the picture, because you don't, they didn't remove money that was taken out to go to the Almond Grove, which has nothing to do with equipment replacement, yet it significantly jacks up the average spending. So we don't even get what is the real amount that's being spent. So I bring this back, because I felt like, you know, after more discussions with residents and ours discussions with the finance committee, I'm starting to learn enough that I wouldn't have learned if I just looked at this presentation that we got. So I'm, and my point is, staff thinks like CAFR. It's good to have some other people that are thinking at it different ways and can think at it strategically. My suggestion, and my wording may not be exactly right, with the current resolution in, I would add a bullet four in the to-do, the do list of that. I would add a bullet four that says something like, and feel free to change the wording if you like, that says that the finance committee reviews the structure of the budget to help give council insight, but does not recommend spending priorities. I think that's what staff is trying to get away from, is priorities being, coming out of that committee. But I think there's a lot of value to having that committee discuss a budget so staff, so council members can better understand. And again, I can't speak for Councilman Specter, but I suspect she also felt like she learned a tremendous amount, because I certainly did, working with the citizens on that committee and the other citizens that came and gave input during it. The other part, so if that's a bullet we want to add, then in the do not do list, if you recall, the next part of it, there's a do not, we'd have to remove the part that says budget, you know, in the comments, kind of thing. So that would be my thoughts on moving forward with this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I appreciate the work that's been done, and I appreciate the charts that Councilwoman Rennie put up. But those charts were part of a CAFR review, which is already within the purview of the finance committee, so there's nothing about the proposal that would change that. If I look at the existing resolution, it says annual review of the town's investment policy, which the recommendation says as well. It says annual review of independent financial audit, which the recommendation says as well. Review of and recommendations regarding new increased revenue sources, which the new recommendation says as well. So there is no change in what Councilwoman Rennie would put up under the new suggestion. What the new suggestion eliminates, which Ms. Pervetti said, is ongoing review of our actions with OPEB, since we have our own council committee that has a fiduciary duty to the town, that I don't know necessarily the citizen members of the finance committee do have. So that causes me a little bit of concern if we were to give them continuing responsibility. I strongly believe that budgeting is done by the elected officials, that's one of the reasons you get elected, and budgeting isn't just numbers and money, budgeting is priorities. So there's not, well, I appreciate the expertise of the citizens, there's not a mathematical correct answer. So if I were to go with Councilwoman Rennie's suggestion to allow someone to review the structure of the budget, there is no way that I can review the structure of the budget without ultimately making a recommendation about how the monies are distributed, as with the internal service funds that we looked at. Council may decide that they want to spend that on something valuable, maybe a community school bus pilot, maybe raising PCI, maybe having public art, maybe doing a parklet, something like that. But if I say to essentially a shadow finance department, which is the citizen members of the committee, who of the committee, who we've heard want to be a full advisor without having that same fiduciary duty, or having to answer to their decisions for constituency when they recommend priorities, then I think we give up part of what we're supposed to be doing. So all the, the new proposal does is say, "Okay, we're, we have now a council committee that we take on to determine recommendations with our 115 fund, et cetera." So we are not now including that because the Finance Committee worked through it. And we are saying, "Okay, rather than, say you can do a special project, which is in the existing resolution, but by the way, says at the direction of the council, the finance director or the town manager, rather than decide yourself what you want to review and make your project, we're specifically saying, well, what, this is what you don't do. You don't budget, you don't, you know, do routine financial things that we have a professional staff to do." So while, and those documents are still accessible to anyone and still accessible to members of the Finance Committee to give us their input on, as they do quite well, quite effectively, and we've all learned a lot. So I, I'm unclear on exactly what the controversy is about with the new proposal, because all it does is memorialize the role and responsibilities of the council, which I think is a fair thing to do without essentially changing the structure of the Finance Committee.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I've had the opportunity to serve on the Finance Committee for the past year, but not for the first year. And it has been a fascinating opportunity. Being able to serve on a committee where there are non-council members who are so talented and so knowledgeable. And I totally agree with Mr. Rennie. Every meeting, I learn so much. And I think I'm pretty good at numbers, and I always have been. But the depth of knowledge and the information that those members, those gentlemen, bring to each agenda item is amazing. And it's a committee or commission experience that I have never had on any other committee or commission on which I've served in this council. And I'm not surprised that the, if the chamber attends our meetings, and I know they have, that they learn so much, because you really do. And it certainly isn't a committee where the lay, the non-commission council members are in lockstep and all telling us the same thing and the, and the council members are in lockstep. Absolutely not. There is a tremendous amount of discussion, a tremendous amount of arguing sometimes. And yes, sometimes the two council members do agree on the decision, and sometimes they don't. Sometimes we come forward and make a unified recommendation to the rest of the council, and sometimes we do not. So I think this is a committee that should go forward under the current resolution, and I will speak to that in just a moment. In fact, I was going to suggest that the only change we should make is, right now, there's not a set time for this meeting, and I would suggest that the times start at six or even seven, because the biggest challenge we're having of getting these executives to apply is because they're still working. And I would like to eliminate that issue with getting folks on the Finance Committee. And in looking at the current, the current resolution, there is nothing in that resolution that transgresses on this council's ability or right to make decisions. It has, the verbs are review, recommend, propose. Those are not decisions, that is input. And that's why I think this committee is so great, because it gives input. And like I said, it gives diverse input, not just, you know, all of the same mind. Yes, then it comes up to us, and the five of us, three of us at least, maybe more, have to make the ultimate decision. So I would keep this resolution as it is. The major thing that staff is recommending that comes out of it is the OPEB and CALPERS line item, and I think that's the biggest thing that we still have to work on. I mean, we're going from having 20% of our budget on these, in debts, and it's going to go up to 40% of our budget. This issue still exists. It doesn't, it doesn't go away because we have our 115 fund committee meeting every quarter. That's pretty passive there. The Finance Committee isn't passive. This Finance Committee is working for the benefit of this town, and I think that we should all appreciate it. Take what they have to say and then agree with it or not agree with it, but appreciate the information that you're getting.
Councilmember Seac.
So, you know, I haven't served on the Finance Committee, so I haven't had that appreciation of working side by side with the, with the non-council members. But I do know that we have had the benefit of a robust dialogue due to the Finance Committee as well as to staff. I think the value that I have received as a council member with these discussions is a better understanding of what questions to ask and a better understanding to hear different perspectives on how to look at our finances. And I attribute that to the dialogue that we are having from our staff, from our council, as well as our Finance Committee. So to that end, I know that there was a lot of discussion on December 18 about the internal service fund policies. There were lots of questions made, and one of the issues that was brought forward was having staff create some draft recommendations and whether or not that came back to the council or whether that came to the Finance Committee for review and recommendation. At that time, we were told that that was outside of their purview, and that's why we're having this discussion today. But just rereading it, it does look like we have the opportunity under J5 for the special projects, so that if there are opportunities like this internal service fund to ask for more additional information from financial minds, we have that opportunity there. So I don't necessarily think that we need to resend the existing to replace it. And just be absolutely clear that what we're asking from the Finance Committee is what we ask from all our committees and commissions, that we work on projects in tandem so that we produce a discussion and results on our strategic priorities. What we don't want is any committee, whether it's the finance or whether it's transportation and parking, to go off and work on items that aren't a council priority that has been decided by that, by that first meeting of the year. I think if that's just memorialized so that there's that understanding that we're trying to work together to address OPEB, to address a better analysis of service funds, I think we'll be in lock sync so that we can actually start achieving things that don't feel like we're in conflict. So I am, I'm in support of what Councilmember Specter said of just keeping the current resolution as is, but I like the idea of attaching a schedule to it and changing the hour so that it's a little bit more friendly to those that are still working and those that want to plan out a schedule for the year with their own individual work schedules.
If, if I may speak for a moment on the pension-related item. The pension-related item was actually recommended as a result of the good work that's been done exactly by council, the Finance Committee and staff. When all of the communities in California and across the nation first started identifying their pension liabilities, and then with two back-to-back recessions, which then reduced the assets that needed to fund those liabilities, all of us started talking a great deal about our pensions and what types of solutions could be found to try and address what was now referred to as an unfunded obligation or an unfunded liability. This council, the Finance Committee and staff, has worked diligently at finding solutions. 115 trust is one solution. Just last month, on December 18, we actually added new language to the investment policy to make it clear that those trusts can be used for whether it's referred to as budget stabilization, additional lump sum payments, or other ways to try and help offset the liability. We also came to council, this was vetted at the Finance Committee, to move to a shorter amortization for the existing liability, because we want to move to a more sensible amortization to pay the existing liability. The OPEB trust back in 2009, this council, our previous council members, on the recommendation of the finance director, started funding the OPEB liability because we realized that doing a pay-go system was not going to suffice in the long run, that the liabilities were going to continue to grow even if we were just making the annual payment. And so that vehicle went from a 0% funding to almost a 60% funding now. Most of the solutions have been vetted and actually been implemented. And so from a pension standpoint, at the Oversight Board, the fiduciary roles that really exist now are discuss your actuarial valuation on an annual basis and discuss the variables associated with that valuation. That is a discussion that should be led by our actuary, Bartel. Bartel should be the one guiding that conversation with all the council members present at an Oversight Board meeting. In terms of asset allocation, we have a huge benefit of the committee members on that committee. These are very well-versed business folks who are very well-versed in accounting matters, business management, and things of that nature. None of them are necessarily asset allocators. And so in asset allocation discussion, especially with the way our plans are established, the CALPERS OPEB only provides three options for asset allocation. The PARs account for the 115 only provides five allocations. So it's really more of a risk-reward discussion, which I believe, based on what I witnessed at our last meeting, is a discussion that the Oversight Board is more than capable of having. You debated in a reasonable fashion the risk-reward associated with whether it was staff's recommendation, which you ultimately did not approve. First is what you thought was a more appropriate risk profile with the understanding of the liabilities. I will say, when it comes to asset allocation, you have the benefit of myself. I'm a previous chief investment officer that managed $5 billion in multi-asset allocation. I would say of all the folks, whether it's our council members, our committee members, or our staff, I probably have the most asset allocation experience. And as I mentioned, based on what I witnessed at our last meeting, I thought that Oversight Board handled that risk-reward discussion very well. So the pension recommendation stemmed out of the fact that we've been very successful finding solutions. The only thing left to do for pensions now, other than admire the problem, is decide to put more money towards it. That's really the only solution left. You can either put more money in a 115 trust, you can either put more money in the OPEB trust, you can put more money directly to CALPERS. And so that's why we gave that recommendation, not because we didn't think there was a successful outcome from everything that happened at the Finance Committee, it was the exact opposite. The outcomes that came out of the last several years, we've pretty much exhausted solutions. The only thing left to do now would be a budgetary decision.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Is there any more discussion from council? I see Mr. Rennie's hand up.
I, I just can't help but comment. So we, I agree, we had a very good oversight discussion of the risk and whether we wanted to change it or not. But if, I'm sure if you go back and look at the video, the two Finance Committee members are the ones that led most of that discussion because we'd already had a good, robust discussion with, with other people. That's what allowed us to have a good discussion at our Oversight Committee meeting.
Councilmember Specter.
Let me start out by saying, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start out by saying that the Finance Committee gets information, gets from staff, from Mr. Andrews, and from people who speak at our three minutes, and from the committee. It is a wealth of information which people like two council members then weigh and consider. I think the, the reference to how well the Oversight Board analyzed the risk-reward is fascinating, because the risk to be taken was recommended at a lower level by staff and at a greater level of risk from the Finance Committee. And ultimately, by virtue of a discussion, this council went with the greater risk, which was coming from the Finance Committee, not from staff. That doesn't mean staff's wrong and the Finance Committee is right, but it was an analysis that we had the benefit on the council of considering.
I will chime in. Back in the good old days, when Councilmember Specter and I were, when I, my first experience with the Finance Committee prior to the citizen members, was we would go in this room and sit at this table and review the, the CPA would review the CAFER. And we would have a bunch of paper about this thick, and we'd go through, and we'd just ask random questions about random things, trying to gather information. And maybe it was because in the good old days, the unfunded pension liability wasn't as high as it is now, but there began a discussion at one point about trying to amortize the unfunded pension liabilities at a faster rate. And then, of course, several years later, citizens started taking interest in, in that and bringing forth ideas. And then came about the citizens' participation in the Finance Committee. It's always valued to have citizens involved in our boards and commissions. We honored three of them earlier tonight for their various services. The question becomes, how much is enough, how much is too much? I think that debate can continue, depending on one's point of view. What we don't want to have is redundancy, tug-of-war, infighting, people who are taking too much staff time or critical, too critical of staff or disrespectful to our staff because they have a different point of view. I heard mentioned earlier that this is not a private industry, it's not run like a private industry. Well, it's a government agency, and it's sometimes it's very frustrating because we have rules and regulations that we have to abide to that the private sector does not have to. We also have five individuals up here who are elected by the people who set the policies, fix the policies, tweak the policies, et cetera, et cetera. And that is our responsibility, and we just can't, you know, randomly change it without having a public hearing on it. I, you know, based on the discussion I'm hearing this evening, two thoughts have come to mind. One is, should we change the time of the Finance Committee meeting to have more citizen volunteers perhaps apply? The other is a thought that I had, who sets the agenda? Because I want to rewind back to what I said earlier. Councilmember Specter and I would go and we would review the CAFER, and staff said, "This is what we're going to do, Finance Committee is going to meet." I think we met once a year to do this, and we reviewed the CAFER, and then again, we asked a bunch of random questions, and it was, we went on our way. But now, I think with the expanded scope of the Citizens Committee, we really need to start thinking about who gets to pick the agenda items for the Finance Committee. Is that going to be by staff? Can, can you weigh in on that, Ms. Pervetti?
Well, since we don't have a motion on the floor, I'm not sure exactly where we're going to go. But typically, there's a calendar of events, and the agenda is set based on that particular calendar. So for example, the investment policy is typically discussed in the spring, prior to it coming before the council in the May timeframe with the budget. We do have the internal service fund policy work that was given to us in December. We're targeting a March date to the full council. So if this council decides that the internal service fund is something that they would like its Finance Committee to consider, then that would likely be on its next agenda.
So based on your answer, the way it is occurring now, whatever discussion comes out of this room and whatever the council deems important, along with the standard calendar for specific events during the year, it comes together that way. And what I was thinking, based on the discussion, is the Finance Committee members, one of them is the chair, one is the vice chair, there are only two, those who sit on the council, they can receive feedback from the public, and then they, I guess it would be the chair would try to set the agenda, that might be another approach, to try to come up or address some of these issues that... or address some of these issues that the public is interested in during the meetings. And they can decide, you know, to what level or what extent that could be. I think we don't have any council policy that supports this right now, or any council resolution, or anything else. Maybe this should be an idea brought forth to the policy committee to, to look into. Because based on the way this committee has evolved since when I was first on it, and what it has turned into now, and the discussions that we're having, I think we need to have a more organized way to put items on the agenda in the meeting, and have that be up to the chair of that meeting. So those are my thoughts. You know, again, we, we discussed, I don't really see anybody's wings being clipped here, or anybody's wings being expanded on the committee, based on the reports that I see. I, I look at it like, the public is still invited to come in and participate, all that they want, in public comments at every single meeting, as well as at the finance committee meetings, and bring forth your ideas. You can participate at budget time, you can participate at any time. You can, those who participate know that they can send us emails whenever they want with your concerns, and we do appreciate all those extra eyeballs and all that feedback. The best ideas come from the community. But the question becomes, you know, with, with staff time, and what we have to focus on, and what this council body decides upon, based on the information, how much time can we sit in a finance committee meeting, and how much scope do we give to the individuals on that committee? And, and what is actually allowed or, or legal for us to do in that capacity? So I, I see that's where the disagreement or the, the discussion comes from here. Those are, that's my stream of consciousness for now. Vice Mayor?
I'm going to try to make a motion, just so that we can see where it goes. My motion is that we retain the existing resolution, and that we add some clause that enables a, the finance committee to schedule meetings regularly at a time determined by the finance committee.
Second?
Motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number eight, which is a discussion about the abatement of weeds and hazardous vegetation.
Thank you. This is regular consideration of this item. In this particular case, there was some information that wasn't communicated from a date perspective to the potential interested parties in the community. So we're asking that you continue this item to the next meeting, so that we can take it up and do, provide the, the accurate notification.
Vice Mayor?
Move to continue to February 5, or do we need to open it for comment from the public?
I think we will open it for public comment, and I don't have any cards on this. Does anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we will go back to the vice mayor's motion.
Move to continue this item to February 5.
Councilmember Specter?
Before I second, a question of staff. Is this, is this extension going to delay weed abatement? And I'm asking that question in the terms of the fires that have been around.
It will not.
That's great. Second?
We have a motion and a second. I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Morley. Going on to council matters. Councilmember Saak?
I would like to remind the council that on January 30, the League of Cities is hosting their quarterly meeting. We will have representatives from MTC and ABAG to discuss the CASA compact that was recommended to the legislature. Cities Association had a recent meeting, and it was a wealth of information. So if anyone is interested in participating, that's on January 30.
Councilmember Saak, what is the location of that meeting?
It's in Mountain View, and those details, we can, if the town manager could send that out again, and we can make arrangements for anyone who'd like to attend.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Specter?
Thank you. One meeting to report on, the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, CDAC, met and gave input on a proposed hillside subdivision.
Vice Mayor Jensen?
I attended that CDAC meeting as well, and I, along with some town staff, and councilwoman Saak, and the mayor, were happy to be able to greet students who got off our first school bus run on January 7. So that was exciting.
Thank you. Councilmember Rennie?
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen and I, I guess you forgot, attended my last policy committee meeting before we switched over, and we are bringing, we made a lot of good progress in bringing to councils on items on short-term rentals and pilot parklet program. And I, and we worked on fence ordinance, but didn't finish that one up. I also attended the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority Risk Oversight Committee. And then the big one I've, I've done since last meeting was the VTA board meeting. It was another 5:30 to midnight, again, with about two hours of closed session in it. I'd say the most important item for us was staff's proposal for the modification to the next network that will be implemented when the BART station opens in six months. If you recall, the ad hoc committee's recommendation to reduce service hours that I mentioned last time, from the original plan, was to go to a 90-10 ridership versus coverage model to help fill their, their $20 million budget deficit. I was pleasantly surprised that the recommendation included very little removal of complete routes. I was afraid we might lose routes in the West, West Valley cities. Instead, a majority of the cuts were small cuts, like having some routes start at 6:00 a.m. instead of 5:30. For example, the last West Valley bus would be, from West Valley College, would be at 11:00 p.m. instead of midnight. The, the biggest discussion at the board was about the 22, which runs all night and has 40 homeless that shelter on it, and other 120 riders between 1:00 and 4:00. Cutting this 1:00 to 4:00 service allows significant savings, because it allows them to shut down their dispatches. They don't, they have to have dispatch up and running for only one line. This is, a, basically, what the board did is approve taking this out for discussion. So this is just the beginning of the process. But my, my point in all this was, it's, at this point, it's good news. It could change a lot, depending on, you know, where public discussion pushes it, but it, at this point, we just lose a little bit on the ends of service, instead of full lines of service. The other item that may be of interest to us is the board approved programming $150,000 to develop a vehicle mile travel estimation tool that the congestion management agencies, IES, can use in our land use planning per the new state requirements. The board also approved the, approved the appointments to the standing committees, and I was appointed to the congestion management committee and the capital oversight committee. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rennie. Since our last regular meeting, I attended the Veterans Memorial Groundbreaking with councilmember Saak. As was mentioned, I greeted the kids getting off the school bus at Fisher School, along with some of our transportation and parking commissioners, and the vice mayor, and councilmember Saak, and Mr. Morley, and members of our staff. I attended the West Valley Sanitation District Board of Directors meeting, very brief meeting. We chose the chair and the vice chair. I also attended a youth commission meeting, and I discussed with them ideas about how to deal with the summer beach traffic that we know is coming. We will move on to manager reports.
Thank you. Just two announcements. First of all, this week, we will be submitting and putting up onto our website applications for our annual community grant process. As you recall, we have grant opportunities for the arts, as well as human services. In addition, our clerk department is now accepting applications for our sales tax oversight committee. The interviews will be held in February, so it's a very quick recruitment. February 19 is the interview date. So if you know of residents, we have seven openings for the oversight committee. Thank you.
All right. That wraps it up. Thank you, everybody, for your participation this evening. Have a good night.